Yeah. I don't know. Is Michael coming? I'm going to be back. Okay. Just checking. You want to make sure I'm on the right spot? Oh, beautiful day.
Yeah, temperature is lovely out there.
It's warm. A little warm in here.
Yeah, a little warm in there.
Thank you for the water.
Can you start soon? I've got a little bit of time to run here. I'm sorry, Sarah.
It is. They're filling up. Um, now it's in.
Now what?
One of our presenters is in.
So, big money, huh? What? Big money, huh? Big money?
Big money?
Yes.
When you associate with big money?
Yes. Big money.
Want to make three errors? Get started.
I don't quit.
Yeah. Whatever we're planning on finding.
So Moses and the other.
Bob's gonna have to go. Money.
Remember the view from up there?
Um, been a while.
I remember, is that right?
Yeah, been a while. I'm gonna be down there hopefully soon.
How's your meeting?
Uh, December fifteenth.
Let me wait a few more minutes for Michael. Have you talked to him since this week?
We sent him the information on Monday and, um, he had res- he responded, you know, said he was available and then he left no one to meet with. And, um, he didn't say that he got the packet, I don't think, but we sent it to him. Did he say?
No one required to, who I thought I sent him out to.
Yeah, he required officially, well, he had a time of the day, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He said he could make it in, yeah. Thanks.
Wait a few more minutes. He's on Zoom.
There's only three people.
You and Nova, you and staff and Nova.
We actually have, um, presenter, Nancy, and Moses.
Nancy.
Um, Tommy? Tommy?
To me.
Oh, Moses is with Harrow.
Yes.
Yeah. Don't be the couple each other with that.
Sorry.
Yeah, so they don't know.
We don't see the, sorry.
They don't know.
All this is like new weapons.
Yeah. They used to.
Is that what you want to see?
This is a new format for it. That's why it doesn't look.
So you have to click on that so they can speak and are they going to be seen or?
So busy, huh?
Excellent.
Good?
Yeah.
Busy.
Uh, not overly so.
Well, that's.
Yeah, I'm retired a year ago, so I can work at like, in a very good space without, uh,
Are you enjoying that?
Pretty much, yeah.
Got plenty to do?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah. Doesn't take a lot to keep me busy, I guess. I can take it slow, that's okay.
That's okay.
So no major activities, uh, but, uh, a lot to do, yeah.
Good. I'm trying to figure that one out myself.
There it is. There it is.
My apologies, this committee for being late, I had a breakdown. I did it. I broke through a chain. Jammed up and walked home. Did you start?
Not yet. We had to wait for you.
We were waiting.
Jesus. Cheer is this.
So I guess we'll call the November sixteenth meeting of the Climate Committee to order. We'll note that everybody's here. The first matter on today's agenda is public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the chair. Matters not appearing on the agenda will not receive action. At this meeting, it may be referred to staff. Persons are not required to provide their names, and it's helpful for speakers to state their names so they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. That's a couple weird sentences. Um, so anybody in the chambers? Anybody on Zoom that wishes to, wishes to speak? Okay, so we'll close public comment and we'll go to the first item on the agenda. Receive a presentation from Integral Corp. and Haro Kasunichin Associates slash EMC regarding the results of the coastal engineering condition evaluation, Task One, and shoreline and beach change analysis, Task Two, part of the coastal engineering study. Mary?
Thank you. So, um, we are going to receive a presentation from Matt Jameson and Ashley Ellison from Integral Group, and also, um, we have Moses Kapril from Haro Kasunichin Associates, and they will be, um, presenting on the first two tasks of the coastal engineering and hazard assessment. But first, I'm going to provide just a brief overview of what the coastal engineering study entails. Task One is, um, the two, the two items that are going to be presented to you this afternoon. Task Three is the shoreline and beach erosion exposure modeling, um, which will provide the effect of erosion by existing armoring, which is the revetments in the sea walls, and what happens when those structures fail or are removed. And Task Four is the coastal hazard and sea level rise vulnerability assessment, which will provide the hazard type, it will deal with sea level rise impacts, coastal bluffs, and roadway impacts, and will provide near and long term. The consultants are currently working on both Task Three and Four at this time. Um, and then Task Five is, uh, EMC provided a memo summarizing the city's hazard policies in their, in our local coastal plan. And, um, so that phase of, uh, Task Five leads into Phase Two of this study, which is, um, was recently approved by a coastal commission grant that we received for five hundred thousand. And, um, that also has, uh, seven different tasks associated with it. The first being a, um, that Integral will go and summarize the range of possible adaptation strategies and describe conse- consequences of each of those strategies. They'll identify high priority adaptations and like, that will likely need to be implemented over the next ten years. And they also have in Task Two a public outreach and engagement, so they have a number of meetings that they have, um, planned for. And they will do a socioeconomic assessment as part of, um, with the grant from the coastal commission. It's something that we do as well. And they analyze changes to the city's revenue streams, asset values, and business as usual approach is what they usually, um, they evaluate. And then Task Four is they will develop an adaptation pathway for each of the four sections of the city's coastline by identifying appropriate strategies for the short, medium, and long term. And Task Five is developing the coastal hazards policy in coordination with the city and also the coastal commission. Task Six is additional policy updates. That is making sure that anything that we changed in, um, Task Five, which is the coastal hazard policies, is consistent with all of the other sections of the LCP. And Task Seven is actually the LCP amendment, where, um, we go through the whole process with the coastal commission and make an amendment to our LCP. Um, with that, I can turn that over to Matt and Ashley and, um, and Moses for their presentation of Task One.
Mary, can you hear me?
No.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, well, thank you, yeah, that's a great lead off. Um, so Ashley and I are here and we are going to share with you, uh, the results from Task One and Task Two. Um, however, if Moses is, is on the call here, I will defer to him and I will let him present on findings of Task One. So Moses, are you on the line as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thanks, Moses. Um, we have a slide deck that we prepared, we sent it to Mary, so, um, we can have Mary share her screen or we can share our screen. Uh, and we can have you, uh, present to that if you'd like, or, um, I can, uh, start presenting on our side and, uh, hand it off to you if you like. Moses, let me know what you prefer.
Um, why don't you go ahead and I'll jump in when we, uh, are getting into the weeds with, uh, the condition assessment.
Okay, uh, thanks, Moses. Okay, so just to lead off here, um, and Mary, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, Gmail right now. Um, is it possible we can bring up the, uh, slide deck or I can share my screen as well?
Yeah, that's funny because we are seeing, um, your presentation on the screen and not my Gmail.
Oh, okay.
Um, huh, okay. Um, yeah, we are seeing it.
Oh, here we go, yeah.
Okay.
I'm seeing it, there we go.
Okay, great. Um, did you want me to start with Slide One?
Yeah, thank you, guys, this is just an introduction, uh, of Task One and Task Two, as we already mentioned, so let's, uh, move forward. And, yes, so, uh, the coastal engineering assessment was conducted by HKA, um, consultant engineers. Uh, we're on this call, that's Moses and Mark Fox. Um, this is part of a, a larger group that encompasses, uh, Integral Consulting, that's myself, Matthew Jameson, and, uh, Ashley who's here.
I'm Ashley.
Yeah. Uh, should be talking later, I'll be talking later as well on the, uh, Task Two, part of the assessment. Dave Revel, uh, is the principal in charge, he's just not here today. Uh, and EMC is assisting and they'll be doing more work with us in the Phase Two of the study as we get into more the, uh, LCP and then the policy end of things. So, uh, let's move forward to the first slide. All right, so HKA, uh, conducted an assessment of Carmel Beach, uh, last December and, uh, early January, uh, following the winter storms. And they did an assessment of the coastal structures that includes the sea walls, riprap, revetments, uh, and stairwells. Uh, and they took measurements, photos, and they, uh, completed a report, uh, that was turned in, uh, in the, uh, late spring, uh, summer, uh, time period. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So what you're seeing here is a map of the seventeen coastal armoring structures, uh, six riprap revetments and eleven vertical sea walls, uh, that were surveyed. And there's a priority of ranking that HKA gave to each of these, and you can see, uh, the ones that are indicated in red. Those are the, uh, revetments and sea walls that were, uh, noted as high priority for repair. Uh, and stairwells are on the right side of that map. Uh, same kind of idea, red indicating, uh, high priority and then orange, kind of, well, they're got orange, uh, indicating medium, uh, level of repair. We can move on to the next slide. Oh. Here. Here we go, so, yeah, the next slide. Uh, so there's a stairway overview, there we go, yeah, so, uh, there's eleven total stair, stairways assessed and four were in high priority for repair, four medium priority, three were, uh, low priority repair. Uh, Moses can speak to this, uh, better than I can, but typically the high priority ones, there were perhaps, uh, corroding hardware or the landing from the stairways onto the beach, uh, was unsafe due to scouring or, um, perhaps treads were worn, things of that nature, so let's go to the next slide. Uh, so here's some examples of those. This is, uh, a photo from the Eastern Assessment, two thousand sixteen, uh, where with the highly scoured beach, uh, you can see that there's an unsafe, uh, landing there and then there's some significant corrosion and splitting wood members, uh, along those treads. Next slide. Uh, another example of a stairwell, the stairs are functioning well here, um, but there is, uh, a significant amount of sand, uh, affecting the access. Next slide. There we go, and here's another example of a stairwell with, uh, corro- with both corrosion and also a, um, unsafe landing. And here's an example, um, Moses and Mark can speak to this in more detail, but this is a sea wall that, uh, has been assessed to need significant repair and would require to be demolished and rebuilt. Uh, this is up by the volleyball court area near the Delmar parking lot. Uh, it's, it's a sea wall, uh, around that outfall structure. And then next slide. And then of the riprap that, uh, they were able to assess, um, generally speaking, the issues were that the riprap, uh, would need to be, uh, restacked. Uh, some, uh, the riprap was undersized and some were not properly keyed into the bedrock. Um, and the suggestions are to remove the undersized rock and rebuilds. Um, Moses, uh, this is mostly what I have, but would you like to add anything?
Sure, um, I think it's, it's, uh, thank you for that, by the way, that was a good presentation. The, it's good, important to look at the priority of the ranking from very low to high. Uh, it should be viewed as the order in which the improvements are to be repaired, not of the level of threat to the person using the stairs. So we tried to prioritize which ones you guys should get to first, um, and that's, that's how we ranked it, high priority to low. Um, and so I think it's important to, to understand that. There were some, uh, stairs that did pose safety threats to the, uh, users and it would only be during, uh, very high sand scour events where some of the bottom two or three steps were, uh, not there because they either were, the stairs were constructed when the sand was higher or they'd been damaged and removed during, uh, wave run-up activity. Uh, so that's, uh, that's an important thing to understand. Uh, none of it's an emergency where we're saying, you know, shut the stairs down and, uh, you know, you know, call in the officials. But, uh, they do need to be repaired and, uh, thus the order they should be done in. Of the six revetments we, we inspected, four are in need of repair, one in its entirety. Uh, and the others are, you know, some portion of it needs repaired. And, uh, of the eleven sea walls we inspected, only one is in need of, of imminent repair. And that was the one that was displayed, it's on the up coast end of the beach closer to, um, you know, up coast from Fourth Avenue. And, um, it's, uh, deemed unsafe in our opinion from an engineering standpoint and that should be not only a high priority in terms of fix that one first, but that one actually looked unsafe. Um, so it was a little bit of, uh, a threat to the, the beachgoers and public. So that's really what I got to add, I think you did a, a good summary there, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thanks, Moses. Um, I'll just leave it open to some questions after that, the next slide is just for questions.
Questions? Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, I had a quick question, I was interested to know if, uh, the fact that the riprap seems to be more in need of repairs, is that something you typical, be fairly typical to see where after forty years, riprap's going to need more repair than say a sea wall just on average? Is there any sort of pattern that you've experienced with that?
Well, it, commonly what I see around this area in, in smaller communities, you know, when we're not considering a large port or, you know, harbor of something where they've had the Army Corps come in and design the riprap revetment structure, is the, there was an emergency of some sort and a contractor was called in and asked to dump large boulders on the beach. And at that point, the contractor became the coastal engineer because they didn't size up the rock, they probably got whatever they could get their hands on and dumped it. And that rock being undersized is subject to, uh, being plucked or picked up and moved by waves. It's fairly common all around the, the central coast, you know, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County. Uh, most revetments are undersized and they haven't been properly keyed into a, uh, solid, uh, base like a bedrock material. One of the revetments we inspected, because we were very fortunate, all the sand had scoured out, we could really see the bottom of all of them, which usually is not the case. Only one of them had a, a keyway and seemed to be performing very well. Uh, the rest did not appear to have a keyway and it's not uncommon for it to be undersized, so it's getting plucked and it has no keyway, so it, it can't stay put, uh, in its original stacked position. So, um, it's fairly common that these revetment structures, being that they're undersized, need to be restacked routinely. And it's often a, a grading permit from the governing agency and the contractor comes out, retrieves the fugitive rock, restacks it back up, we're usually not allowed to establish a keyway of an existing structure. Um, uh, for, you know, coastal commission is not in favor of that type of activity. Um, so we commonly have to come back, sometimes several years in a row if there's a lot of, uh, sand scour and, and large sert to restack the same revetment over and over and over. Um, sea walls, they should last, you know, fifty to a hundred years. Um, and when they get to the end of their, they're harder to maintain because they're made out of often concrete or wood as opposed to a rock structure where you just keep restacking it. Uh, so when they get to the end of their life, they do need to be, they're difficult to, to keep stable. Um, you know, just a simple filling of cracks and, um, isn't working anymore. Often they get undermined at their base due to scour of their foundation, uh, material that they're supported upon and that will result in the structure wanting to overturn and collapse. So it's, uh, you know, it just depends when the structure was built, but, you know, when it gets to the end with the sea wall, it's, it becomes more of a problem or you just have to demo and rebuild it, start over. Um, but revetments typically are plucked and moved around unless they're designed properly like you see in, you know, Moss Landing Harbor or Santa Cruz Harbor where they've got very large rock and it stays put, it's designed properly. So that's been my experience, uh, in, in this region doing coastal engineering. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, that's really helpful, I appreciate the characterization, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Michael?
That's your link.
I don't know if it's on. Um, this may be a little premature, but after reading your report, seems like there's a lot of deferred maintenance here and, uh, particularly in the area that revetment, seems like there's a lot of construction problems. I think the sea walls were assessed to have about thirty years of life less, but I'm just wondering, like I said, this may be a little premature, you may not be able to answer it, but do you have any idea about what level of risk we may be experiencing with this coming, uh, winter storms? Or any specific areas which, along the beach, which are going to be more at risk due to a particular revetment or sea wall?
Well, uh, I, my sense is that what we saw last year, or this year really, in January of, of twenty twenty-three was a pretty, pretty severe, um, uh, high sand scour event, which is, they happen in Carmel every so often. Um, I would be surprised if we got them back to back to that severity. I know they've been forecasting another, um, you know, uh, El Nino or, or, uh, larger sert type of a season. Um, if it does scour, I would expect it to scour no more than what we saw in, in Jan- January this year and the revetments didn't outright collapse. Um, there is some fugitive rock laying around and, uh, it can be restacked and make the structures a little more stable. There, there is some over steepened structures, um, because their toe rocks have been displaced and that does pose hazard if the sand is actually scoured out and the structure is not buttressed by the beach sand and people can kind of sit and put a towel out right at the base of the revetment and they're a little bit at risk sitting right there, so it would make the most sense to, yeah, take advantage of the opportunity to, to restack. There's a balance to it where you can only get out there and work when the water's not hitting the back shore of the beach. And often when the sand is completely scoured out, it's doing that and it's difficult for a contractor to safely access the site and work and not, you know, violate any, uh, you know, uh, environmental ordinances. Uh, so you gotta sort of time it right when you get a good scour event, you keep an eye on it, you want a little bit of sand to come back and buffer the beach so that you can, uh, get equipment out there and, and you're, you're set back from the tidal waters and do the work. Um, so to answer your question, I don't expect a major collapse or any kind of, uh, disaster to occur this, this year, even the sea wall on the up coast end of the beach. Um, but I think, uh, you, it would be wise to start working on a maintenance, uh, scheme for these revetments and planning to replace this sea wall, uh, as soon as possible, the one on the north or the up coast end of the beach. Most of the sea walls we saw out on the, on the beach, the, they seemed like they'd been there a while. They were all in pretty good shape, the ones we said we thought had another thirty years left. Most of them are those, uh, rock stack looking, uh, walls you see up and down the beach, they're kind of nice to look at and they, they weren't, they may have had a little bit of undermining, but they were, uh, not severely undermined where we felt, hey, this is, this is a problem. And that's the main way we see sea walls fail in this area is undermine. Uh, not from waves blowing them up like a bunch of bowling pins. Um, so, uh, sure, that was a long answer, but the short answer is I wouldn't really worry about it, I would just start planning now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary?
Thank you for the presentation, I have, I have a few questions. Um, going back to what you just said, you know, when you were talking to, uh, Michael about the danger, should we be on the lookout this winter? Like, you know, I know you, you just stated that you didn't think, uh, another big scour event was going to happen. But if, if a big scour event does happen, should we be out there, should, should Bob be out there with his tractor? Like replacing rocks, re- replacing some of these fugitive rocks on the bottom of the revetments to sort of make them safer on a, as, you know, without any, without any engineering work or aid? Should we just be trying to maintain them as best we can while they're uncovered?
Well, like I said, it's difficult to work when you're in a high sand scour, it's, it's a balancing act. You can see all the fugitive rock and you're like, this is excellent, I want to go down there and grab it. The problem is, is wave run-up's coming and can knock over the tractor or the excavator or the, whatever's being used and, and you're actually not supposed to let water touch those structures, uh, environmentally. So, um, it, what we do is we, best thing to do in those moments when you have these high scan scour events is to fly a drone and take, uh, oblique images and vertical images, high resolution, that can be placed in a CAD drawing. Did I lose you guys? You're back, okay.
No, we're here, I'm here.
It all went blue for a second, I got the blue screen of death. Um, fly a drone, you can, that way you can map the location of these fugitive rocks, put them in CAD, we know where they are, we know what elevation they're at, let the sand come back, so we can safely get equipment and personnel on the beach. And then we go and find those locations because we have very high resolution images that are also have elevations. We know we go over here, we expect to find a handful of rocks that are down at elevation plus three, we go over here, rocks will be at plus five, et cetera. And we can work pretty efficiently and dig up the. efficiently, dig up the rock and, and restack. So you don't want to run equipment down there when there's a very high scour event, in my opinion, my experience, because it can, that can cause danger to the workers and is not an environmentally smart thing to do.
Okay, so that was, that was, thank you. So that was another one of my questions. So the best time to do this work is actually not during the spring when most of the sand is gone, but during, let's say, the late part of the summer, when, when a good amount of the sand is back and you can kind of rope off the area or you won't have that water intrusion up at the slope?
Correct. I don't want to put a month or season on it, but whenever the sand starts to come back, it's got a mind of its own. The best time to inspect is when there's a high scour and do some even mapping with drone work. The best time to do the work is after you have, you know, a couple feet of sand back, three, four, five maybe feet of sand, and it gives you a nice buffer between the tidal waters and wave runup and we can work and we're not having to dig down, you know, ten, twelve feet through sand. Just five, six feet of digging and we can, we can find the rock and restack. So that's, does that make sense?
Yes, yes, thank you. You mentioned before, you know, you were talking before about like small cities such as ours versus Army Corps of Engineers design revetments. And you were talking about just simply restacking, restacking the revetments, you know, as often as you can, I guess, to sort of keep them somewhat sound. Is that a, is that an acceptable strategy as opposed to just tearing down the revetment, you know, ripping down the revetment and sort of starting over with all the rocks laid out on the sand? Like, is it okay to, to just be sort of fixing this thing every year, every other year in the manner you described?
Well, it depends on your appetite or, you know, whoever is making that decision's appetite. It's, we commonly will restack undersized revetments over and over again. It's a much more practical, economical approach. You know, the, I know it's a little bit different with the city than, you know, you're dealing with a private property owner who's trying to, you know, construct a revetment new. They're, they're not very popular with the, with the Coastal Commission and they don't like them, they take up a lot of beach footprint. So usually my clients have no choice but to just restack with what they got and, and just keep doing that until you get enough sea level rise that the, the wave runup will eventually flatten the revetment out. Because you're going to have much larger waves, your stillwater level goes up. And once it flattens the revetment out and it slumps and you're, you're kind of underwater at the toe year round, there's nothing you can do at that point. You're going to have to let it go or, or build a vertical concrete seawall. So if you can get the permits and you have the budget to build a new revetment, then you're kind of one and done. I could design it and, or another coastal engineer can design it, size the rock correctly. You're not coming back to restack that thing in our life. But if one of those two or both is not possible, then it's, it's okay to keep restacking. And if, for most, you know, median wave runup scenarios, the undersized revetment will perform. It's just these outlier or, you know, very large surf mixed with a king tide where you get the, the larger runup and higher wave forces plucking the revetment. And then when that happens every so many years, it could happen back to back a couple years in a row, got to go out and restack. So certainly new is better always, but is it practical? Not really.
So finally, you, you mentioned in those comments and then you talked earlier about the Coastal Commission and, and I was talking to Bob this morning and I was, it's, you know, it's my impression that the, the commission has a, you know, a pretty serious view with respect to seawall, with respect to revetments. And what I heard from you is maybe they're a little bit more okay with sea, what I interpreted from you was that maybe they're a little bit more okay with seawalls? Is that, is that a good analysis or are they pretty much not okay with either at this point?
Well, they, they don't like any form of armoring. They, they really are in the managed retreat is, I think is their philosophy, which Matt can probably speak to a little bit more than I can, but, you know, they'd like to see the shoreline just continue to retreat. And the beach will follow the shoreline, so you don't lose your beach. When you armor, you can kind of pinch off access over time as the stillwater level rises. So, but I have had more success with the Coastal Commission with vertical seawalls. They are completely against revetments. Anytime we've tried to propose them in an alternatives analysis, they don't want to go that route. When you have public access, that's a, that's a good bargaining chip with that agency. Their, that's, their whole philosophy is if you do managed retreat, the beach follows the retreating bluff and coastal access is available to the public indefinitely. And so sometimes we will horse trade, so to speak, vertical seawalls with a public access, with a goal of public access, whether it being an actual physical access structure attached to the seawall in the form of a concrete walkway that is a seawall and, or the vertical walls providing access where there was a large footprint revetment that was taking up thirty, forty percent of the beach's width. And now you have this vertical seawall that's taking up, you know, one or two percent of the beach's width. And so the public has better access and recreational access as well. So they don't like either of them, in my opinion. But if you want to try to get a coastal development permit with the Coastal Commission, your better bet is to show an alternative with a revetment and then show an alternative with a vertical wall and say, hey, look how much better this is. And it's a superior alternative in terms of recreational impact, sand loss mitigation impacts, visual impact. You can make them look natural with some art rock and we've had better success with that. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And so, so do you think that with our situation with only one of the revetments being keyed, keyed into the bottom, you know, keyed into the bedrock or whatever it is at the bottom, that we're going to, we're going to have a bit of an issue when we go to replace or rebuild the other revetments because we won't be able to do that with those?
Well, the thing is, is why we're not allowed to add keyways is it's not considered maintenance. So they want you to maintain the structure in its original constructed configuration. So if it had a keyway, you can obviously put rock back into the keyway, restack up from there at a stable gradient. If there's no keyway and we say we'd like to improve this in revetment and, and create a keyway for it so it's more stable and safer for the public, they'll say, well, been my experience, their response is, you need to now, this will be considered a new structure, you'll have to apply for a coastal development permit and submit it with an alternatives analysis that you want to rebuild, you want to build a new revetment with a keyway. And likely it's not going to go well. But, so that's why we can't. It's not considered maintenance. Same with seawall, they don't like you to come in and rebuild the wall. Maintenance is filling cracks, you know, resurfacing areas. If there's an undermined section of the wall that's, that's compromising the stability of the seawall, when we say, well, we'd like to come in and maintenance it with a cutoff wall, they won't go for that. They'll say, you now have to apply for another coastal development permit to get a cutoff wall. So I, again, I don't know how this all plays out with the city being, you guys can issue your own permits, that's always a little different scenario. So I'm hesitant to lay all of this on you guys, but that's just been my experience in the past. It, it seems to me the cities have a little better ability to get things through than, you know, your average homeowner that needs a seawall or a revetment.
Okay. And so I assume from the way that, you know, you're talking, and this is Moses, right? Correct?
Yeah, yeah.
I assume that from the way that you're talking, that seawalls are significantly more expensive than revetments?
Not necessarily. Revetments, you're going to need large rock. Been my calculations, they got to be on the order of seven ton to ten ton for this area. Most rocks I see on Carmel Beach and in all around the central coast area on the order of three ton. To get seven to ten ton rock, you're going to have to do one of two things. You're going to have to find a source that can create that size of a rock, which is up in the Sierras and it's a lot of trucking. And if it's, you know, ten ton of boulder, I think they can only put two or three boulders on a, on a truck and drive it down. That's going to get expensive pretty quickly. Or you have to bring in those, those big concrete jacks you see in the Santa Cruz Harbor, I think they call them tetrapods. Those, you know, those aren't cheap either. They can be precast and brought in on trucks, expensive trucking. So, you know, if you have the source close by, the revetment's cheaper. But if you're gonna, if you don't, then my suspicion is it's probably going to be a wash and the seawall would be maybe cheaper or just as much. And, but politically, the seawall is got a more of a favorability with the Coastal Commission. So if they're both apples and apples for cost, I would go for the seawall.
Okay. Thank you so much for all the, all of your answers.
You're welcome.
Finished? Okay. Oh, anybody from the public? Nancy? Okay.
Nancy, if you have a question, if you want to go ahead and raise your hand.
Okay. Really quickly, it would be great to be able to have copies of the slides. And then the slides, as they were projecting on my end, were extremely blurry. So I couldn't really see a lot of it. And I don't know why, that's not usual. But, okay, so just a logistics thing, so sorry. But otherwise, great material. And, and I think what I understood from this discussion was that north end area is the one that is the most critical, that needs the most attention the quickest. Is that correct?
There's a structure, there's a seawall on the upcoast end of the beach. Yeah, I guess you called the north end. And that one was looking unstable, was a little bit undermined. It also was deteriorated. The concrete itself was falling and it may be hesitant to want to go stand on top of it, which I am a pretty risky person when it comes to seawalls, so that tells me a lot. And yeah, so that's that one. I don't have, I also was having trouble seeing these slides, that's why I asked Matt to present. But if I had an image, I'd put it up. And I can, if you'd like, I don't know if I can share my screen.
That's all right. I'm, I'm good for now. Thank you.
So I have a question related to that, maybe for Bob or Mary. Is it task three and task four that are going to sort of evaluate the cost of the various options of fishing? Or is that phase two? Or is that, is that TBD at this point?
I can speak to that if you'd like. That's going to be a phase two, where we're going to do some cost estimates related to some of these strategies.
I'll expand on that. Thank you, Matt.
You have to get these structures at least to an estimate design level as a replacement to get estimates for them.
Right. The city council last week approved an amendment to an agreement with Wallace Group to prepare an RFP to hire a third-party consultant firm to prepare detailed cost estimates for all of these repairs, the seawalls, the revetments and the, and the stairs, to kind of drill down what makes the most sense, what's, what the cost estimates for those repairs. What Matt's referring to, I think, are more preliminary cost estimates for other, other repairs associated with climate change, sea level rise, that type of thing. So there's two parallel issues going on.
So when Moses talked about, when Moses talked about the, you know, the alternatives of fixing our revetment versus changing it to a seawall, those cost estimates would perhaps include both options?
Once we have that consultant on board to evaluate that, if, like Moses mentioned, if the seawall and a revetment cost the same, we'll go with the seawall. But part of that analysis obviously is working with the Coastal Commission, will accept. But right now, we have no cost estimates.
Right.
It looks like Matt has, has, has his hand raised?
No, I think that's Nancy.
That's Nancy, she's, she's taking her hand down.
Matt does too, though.
Let's see if there's additional comments, questions.
Nancy, do you have more comments or questions?
I'm trying to lower my hand, it's not working. Now, thank you.
Okay. Do we finish with this item?
Sure. So we'll present task two, Ben.
Switch the screen over to the slides again.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Should I pick back up here?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Once again, I do see the Gmail screen, but I will assume that it's being projected, says seasonal long-term shoreline change analysis. Oh, there we go, it's back. Okay. Terrific. All right. So this was, this was work that was following up from the task one work that we just mentioned. So this work involved looking at the seasonal changes in the beach. So that's sort of, as we were talking about, sort of the scouring of the beach as the beach gets narrower, typically in the winter and then builds back up. You see typically those wider beaches in the, in the summer and fall. And then sort of a long-term shoreline change. So how that change has occurred over a longer term record, are we seeing any trends there? So let's go to the next slide here.
So this gives you an idea of the seasonal drivers of those beach changes that Matt just talked about, where in the wintertime, you have higher wave heights, bigger surf, as you guys noted, that'll cause erosion. And then in the springtime, you've got smaller waves that tend to bring the sand back up onto the beach and builds out the beaches. Next slide.
So to do this analysis, we had to rely on a full series of data sets here. Sort of, one of the important things are the wave data that Ashley just mentioned. We also relied on satellite data. This was a key one that we can speak more about. This is relying on coastat data. And this is showing the shoreline, sort of the wet/dry line, how that changes from satellite detection from the early eighties to the recent time. Relied on a whole series of terrain data sets, those are digital elevation models like LiDAR flights. And that's information that we use to get at, so what would have happened to the beach, fall on say in El Nino or scour event, we'll show some of those examples in the future. And then aerial photographs as well, we went back to the nineteen forties. And those are really helpful in letting us see, what, what did the shoreline look like in the past compared to now? And then what type of bluff top changes have occurred in terms of erosion? And then we also looked at some previous surveys. There's some notable ones by Bascom back in the forties, that they used some equipment from D-Day to collect that data and then previous reports and assessments and various photos. So that's the data that we use. Let's go to the next slide. All right. So the beach character. Let's go to the first one. So just to give an overview of the beach here, we all know it from standing on it, but this is kind of going up in a balloon here, looking at it from 3D. So looking down, this assessment's looking at the area from city limits, Pescadero Canyon, down to the Clinton Walker House, the Frank Lloyd Wright House. You can see just below that, there's an image, you can see various bands of color. The green band on the top represents sort of the softer bluff material. That's sort of a terrace deposit or sand or vegetated sand. This is the material that's generally more erodible. So if a wave is running up and it say runs up, splashes over the seawall, or there's a high precipitation of that, this is the type of material that will typically erode and move back, much, much more so than the harder material. And that's what's represented by the gray band you can see just underneath that. That's a harder sort of sandstone basically unit that erodes much slower. Throughout Carmel Beach, a lot of that is protected by seawalls and riprap revetments. And then below that, you'll see the, the beach width changes as well, beach height changes as well. That's that lighter color sand material. And you can see just sort of the higher bluffs are in more or less around the volleyball courts area, the Del Mar parking lot area. the volleyball courts area, the Del Mar parking lot area. Um, and typically speaking, the, uh, sandstone underlays that whole area where there's, uh, dunes, but we just, it's an unknown contact point there, so that's why you just don't see that gray, uh, band through sort of that, um, middle area essentially, through, uh, basically for, to, to Fourth Avenue or so. Um, and then, uh, dunes can be up to 50 feet high, um, but in the south, it's, it's much lower. So this was sort of the assessment that we used, that sort of, uh, informs, uh, much of our future, uh, cliff erosion modeling, uh, that we'll speak about, uh, in a future time. So, uh, let's go to the next slide. All right. So, um, armoring, as I mentioned before, takes about 68% of the city's shoreline. You can see in the south, you've got more seawalls, more riprap, uh, revetments, uh, and sort of this central part of the city. And there's some unarmored sections where it's, uh, dune-backed, or even some open cliff, uh, in the north as well. Um, and Ashley will speak more about this in other sections of the beaches. Most stable beach sections are around the Del Mar dunes and north dunes, and the highest beach widths are in the central northern sections of the beach, with beach width about, uh, 300 feet. All right. And next slide. So this just puts it all together. Uh, this can be found in the report, and, uh, as was mentioned by Nancy, we can make these, uh, slides available, I believe I'll work with, um, Mary to do that. Okay, next slide. So now we'll talk about some of the seasonal changes, and I'll hand it over to Ashley.
Um, all right, next slide. Yeah, so this is coastat, this is the satellite, um, tool that we use to get an idea of how the beach has changed for the last 30 years. And, um, it's a video, so if you can press play, basically, just to give you an idea of what that data is, um, you can see that pink shoreline that's been extracted from the satellite imagery, and then we got, um, measurements of that shoreline over that 30 years worth of data. Um, and when we, oh, we also assessed the entire beach, um, in this case, so we included Pebble Beach section as well, because that is not, you know, that's connected to the rest of the beach, because sand might move, um, kind of between the different compartments. Um, and to the right there, you can get an idea of where, um, some hotspots might be. So after looking at 30 years' worth of data, where on average is, are the beach widths smallest? And that's kind of in the section near the Pescadero Canyon, um, behind that rock, there's kind of an erosion hotspot, and then on the southern end of the beach, um, as well. And the highest beach width, as Matt said, too, uh, is kind of in that more central portion, kind of between central beach, um, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Ashley. Yeah, the, uh, that South Beach area where you can see it's, it's most, uh, it gets the most narrow, is, is sort of near that, uh, headland, you can kind of see, uh, kind of in that southern area, and that's, that's partly why it appears so narrow as well. Uh, you can see there's sort of headlands and sort of pocket beaches there. So let's go to the next slide. Um, so this is a, uh, long-term trend analysis. This is taking a whole series of, um, satellite and aerial photograph images, uh, throughout the past, and we've overlaid on this, uh, some of this trend analysis from 84 to 2021, showing sort of the minimum, the maximum, and also some ranges in between and a mean. And the, the real story here is that since the forties, um, in, in from this record, there hasn't been a significant, uh, long-term, uh, erosive trend, and we'll show some other, uh, material or graphs from the eighties that will show that as well. Um, and that's, that's really the kind of key takeaway, uh, from this image. Uh, there has been some changes, of course, but, uh, no long-term trend across that. So, uh, next slide.
So this comes back to the seasonal beach width changes, um, and this is a graph that shows you how wide the beach is, and it's divided by those different sections. Um, and it gives you an idea of how much a certain section might change between the winter and the summer. And, you know, the first thing, right, is in the, the wintertime, so kind of January, February, you see the smallest beach widths, and then in the late summer, fall time, you see the highest beach widths. And the section with the most change between the winter and the summer is that blue line, that South Beach section. So that area experiences the most variability throughout a given year. And then we have the North Beach section, or the North Dunes, um, that actually experiences the least amount of change throughout the year. So that's the most stable, uh, beach width. And one of the reasons that might be is because you've got sand backing that beach area, so you actually have material kind of feeding the beach throughout the wintertime, so you might have an erosion event, and then the sediment from the dunes will come down and kind of feed, feed the beach. Um, and, and that, that kind of goes back to what Moses was saying about the managed treat idea, where it's, if the beach is allowed to move backwards, then the material from the upper part of the beach is gonna feed the beach itself, if, if that makes sense.
We can go to the next slide. So, uh, and this kind of speaks to a little bit of what Ashley was just mentioning. Uh, we did an analysis of looking at two sets of digital elevation models, uh, taken before and after an El Nino, uh, that occurred in that winter 97, 98. And this map is sort of a heat map showing the elevation change. So the more red, uh, the more elevation that was lost. If there was a little bit of green, uh, that's showing a little bit of deposition. And what you can see is that in that southern section of the beach, sort of between, uh, eighth and, say, basically in the beach, at San Lucia Avenue, uh, a significant amount of, uh, beach loss, uh, up to really 14 feet was about the most that we saw. Uh, and then right where those north dunes are, the, uh, Del Mar dunes area, uh, you see that there's much less of that, uh, erosion, uh, and even in some cases, a little bit of deposition that may be just some sort of slumping that's occurring, uh, as some sand is moving down from those areas. Um, so you, you can really see that the beach can get much, uh, get more scoured out in that south, and yet the, it's a much more muted response, sort of in that more central beach, north dunes, uh, type of area. Um, Pebble Beach also can get quite, uh, scoured out as well. Uh, that's, of course, outside of the city limits. Um, the scale of this event, uh, you can see here, about 300,000 cubic yards of sand was moved. It moves into offshore bars. We've got a great, uh, graphic of this in the report. And then, uh, over time, over, uh, usually a couple seasons, uh, that will, that sand will, uh, slowly, uh, make its way back, uh, onto the beach. Um, so, next slide. So we don't have any, uh, digital elevation models going back to the eighties, um, but this is just a, uh, map that shows some of the observations that were taken at that time. The eighties, uh, that 82, 83 event was the most severe event on record, uh, that we have, and this is when the most significant amount of erosion occurred to the bluff tops. Um, it also predated, uh, some coastal armoring as well, so there's a relationship there, obviously. But, uh, just to give an idea, um, of what that, uh, 1982, 83 event entailed for the beach, there was about, uh, forty, as much as 40 feet, oftentimes 20, but sometimes as much as 40 feet of erosion in some places of that bluff top, uh, edge. And they noted a level of the back beach was four to 10 feet lower in the latter part of July, the normal. That's, uh, about what we saw, uh, during that, uh, 97, 98, uh, El Nino in terms of beach scour as well. And, uh, also to mention, some stairways were destroyed, were partially destroyed. Uh, next slide. Okay. So now we get into some of the long-term changes. We already showed, uh, the one image before, showing those, uh, aerial photographs, uh, over time, and this, this one, uh, this graph here kind of follows from that from the eighties forward, so Ashley.
Right, and, and this is, um, shows how the beach width has changed now over the 30 years, where we have our satellite record. And what that aerial imagery showed was on picture, you can see how the beach from the forties versus the beach, um, from the later years, like closer to modern day, stayed about the same, right? So, so basically, um, the beach widths over time, although you have some years, maybe back-to-back years, or you have a lot of erosion, then that sand will come back later. So you can see that in that blue line, um, where you have, um, an erosion event starting around 1992, and that blue line, that's the southern section of the beach. So the southern section of the beach remained eroded until around 2012, when you have a lot of accretion happening. Um, and then that, that beach came back to kind of more of a median sort of beach width change. So, you know, right now, we're about to be maybe in the middle of some El Nino years, where we'll see some back-to-back years of really small beach widths. But, um, you know, if there wasn't sea level rise, then likely that sediment would just come back to the beach, and you would get your beach back after, um, another accretion year. So that's kind of what this is showing you, is like those historical, uh, erosion years might be followed by an accretion year. You can also see that in 1992, where you have an erosion event, and then the beach width kind of bumped back up after that year. Um, so that, that also just generally points to this idea that, you know, Carmel's a pocket beach, and the sediment that's in the system kind of stays in the system, and it just moves offshore to those bars, and then onshore back onto the beach. Uh, but it might take several years for that sand to come back.
Thanks, Ashley. Now, uh, we can move on to the next one. I believe we're getting to beach recovery. And Ashley, wanna talk about, we just kind of, it's a perfect segue.
Yeah, right, and this is kind of what I was just saying, like, you know, some years you'll have some higher beach recovery rates than other years, like in 97, I think that was following an El Nino year, you had more recovery that year, but, um, right, it, it's generally you'll have like about a, yeah.
Generally speaking, the, the more the beach is gonna get hit from an El Nino, the greater recovery you're gonna see, uh, that, that's, that's perfectly to be expected. Um, and really, what this slide is showing, that, uh, it took on average about 150 days, uh, for the beach, uh, to recover, and the fastest recovery rates were around 1.7 or 2 feet, uh, per day. Uh, so that's, that's really the key takeaway here. But, you know, as we know, with sea level rise, it's something we're gonna be investigating in the future, sort of what this, uh, seasonal response and beach recovery response would look like, and what beach widths would look like with, uh, higher sea levels. Uh, in the historical time period from 85 to 2020, for instance, you know, we've been seeing slowly escalating sea level rise, you know, we're now around, uh, 3 millimeters or so. Um, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but, you know, it's been slowly escalating, but it's been small. But, you know, that will continue to escalate, and then these will obviously change. So that's a future phase, and we can talk about that more at a future time. Um, next slide. So now we'll get into some of the changes that are occurring along the bluff itself. Uh, if you go to the next slide, we, we had a lot of trouble here in determining, uh, bluff top change response in the city itself, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, there's, the major event, as I mentioned, was that, uh, 1982, uh, event, that sort of El Nino, uh, response. And subsequent to that, the city made a lot of efforts to sort of rebuild, building seawalls and, uh, filling and building back from the, uh, erosion events. And because of that recovery, uh, and also just due to the fact that the, uh, bluff top edge is, is highly obscured in a lot of places, it was just very difficult for us to pull out a change in a bluff top edge over time. So we had to look at sort of a proxy site, uh, to get at some, uh, erosion rates over a long-term response. Uh, we looked at, uh, the response over in the Pebble Beach section, um, of which the majority of it isn't armored. You can see some notes where there are some armoring here, but, um, we got an, an idea of what that, uh, recession looked like in Pebble Beach. And we also relied on the Roger E. Johnson study, um, who, he did this, uh, his group had done this work back in 83, uh, following that El Nino, uh, winter, and was able to, uh, find a whole series of, uh, aerial photographs and guide a rate as well. So this is what informed our, uh, long-term, uh, erosion rate, and this will feed into our future forecasts for, uh, cliff erosion, uh, projections and forecasts. Uh, next slide. This is just generally what the Roger E. Johnson analysis found. Um, yeah, about 20 to 40 feet would be sort of the worst, uh, case scenario, and we also found about, uh, 20 feet of loss at, at Pebble Beach between 45 and, uh, 2022. Next slide. All right. So this gets into where we're headed now. This is a, um, we can go to the next slide. Uh, this is a process, we're, we're hard at work on this right now. Um, we're determining, uh, future beach width, so sort of what an average, uh, winter and summer condition for the beach width would look like in the future. So, you know, at post-storm, what would it look like eroded, what would it look like recovered? And trying to project a bluff crest position, uh, along the city shoreline, and giving sort of a range or sort of forecast, which is sort of like a, a min to a max of what that could be, under various scenarios of sea level rise in the future, and, and, uh, some warnings around areas that could potentially see failure, uh, in the future. And then also determining sort of the dune crest, so as that, the dune areas as that retreats, and then sort of that dune, uh, crest would then sort of turn to more of like a, a cliff, uh, erosion process, as the, as the dune is scoured out, and then the more that sandstone underneath that is exposed, and then turns into cliff erosion. So, um, so where does that, eroded scarped position, and then that turns into cliffs. So that's, that's what we're working on, uh, projecting right now. This will be displayed in a series of, uh, maps, and then that'll eventually move into a vulnerability assessment. We can move to the next slide. And the vulnerability assessment will display, uh, the various city assets and infrastructure that could be at risk, so sort of a timing, uh, by sea level rise, or a timing by year, uh, based on a sea level rise scenario. Uh, the extent of the, the hazard, uh, the damages, that'll be in phase two, and the value of the beach, and we can talk about phase two, uh, if you'd like, uh, the dry sand towel space as well, so, uh, how much of that beach space will be available, uh, in the future. And the assets we'll look at, uh, are generally a whole range of city assets, parcel structures, coastal-related access, uh, streets, stairways, uh, things of that nature. And I believe that may be the last slide. Thank you. Yeah, if you have any questions, um, please.
I do.
Carrie?
Thank you. Could you go back to the, um, shoreline stability graph? I thought, I found that was very, and the, you know, average rate of the, the sand, there we go. So I, you know, there's a perception that our beach is getting smaller, but what we're really seeing is that it takes longer for the sand to come back. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right, especially if you have back-to-back El Nino years.
Mm-hmm.
Where you don't necessarily have enough of that beach recovering in a single season.
Um, so I found that very interesting. So thank you.
Yeah.
And maybe if I could ask a related question? I can't help but look at this year, I know it's just one data point, but it seems like it's such an anomaly versus the, the longer-term trends, in that the north beach, Pebble Beach, North Beach, North Dunes area are all extremely below, well below the average, historical averages. And if you go down there today, it's probably, it's almost off the scales, maybe 100, less than 100 feet, and that's probably not far off the average for this year. And so I guess I was, wasn't realizing it might take years for that to recover. It may or may not, but it sounds like it could take years for that sort of thing to recover. And then just another flip side of the anomaly is in, uh, heading south, uh, say, eighth to 12th, it's relatively recovered in terms of beach size this year, uh, you know, not far off the average. So just kind of interesting anomaly to me. I don't know what that means, but it's just so con, counter to some of the long-term data. I don't know if you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can speak to that directly. It'd be interesting to see and really have some more detailed beach surveys over time to kind of speak to it at that granularity, but, uh, some of the, you know, this back beach is taken also, um, it's, it's variable, right? So you, you do have headlands and pocket beaches, it's also sort of, uh, changed the way these data points look, and, and I know in that south, southern area, you know, there's less of that sort of headlands kind of sticking out, where you might have some sandstone deposits sticking out, so maybe could be related to that. But yeah, I'm not quite sure, I couldn't really speak to why that was. I, you know, Dave Revel, who's not on this call, is, uh, really our geomorphology expert, and I defer to him typically, so, um, that's, that's a good question for him for next time.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I, I could add just that probably the south swells that come in in the summertime focus a little more on the up coast end of the beach, and that's what's, you know, grabbing the sand, taking it back offshore, or on the down coast end, it's a little more shadowed from the south swells, and, uh, just the tidal movement back and forth will redeposit the sand back on the beach without disturbance from the waves. So you're getting almost, uh, you know, you got the swells coming from the north and the west in the wintertime rainy season, and then in the summertime, you're, into the fall, you're getting the south swells, which do focus on the up coast end closer to Pebble Beach. So that could be some contributing to this, uh, what you're seeing as well. I just thought I'd add that. Sorry, Matt.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting observation. I, I, I would expect in that case, it, it's just interesting, though, that the southern, you said, is recovering more, right? Is that, is that correct? So.
That's what I'm, I'm seeing. I mean, it's roughly 200 feet right now, and if you look all the way from the dunes down to Pebble Beach, it's less than 100 feet right now. And usually the, for the long-term data, those beach widths are flipped. the, per the long-term data, those beach widths are flipped. And so it seems quite unique this year. And then also just how short those beaches are in the north, how small they are versus even the low points of, you know, the long-term average. So it seems like a really unique condition down there to me.
Yeah. And in some of the aerial, the image or the slide with all of the different aerials, you do see that occasionally in the record, like 1976, October, is it an occasion where we've got higher beach widths in the south than in the north? So, right, but the drivers of that would be a fun analysis to do.
And if I could, one more question. This wasn't in the presentation, but it was in the materials that you sent ahead of time. And you had a FEMA map in there with the baseline flood evaluations. And I was just trying to understand that a little bit better. I, there's quite a big difference. The, I guess it jumps a lot, the number of feet that you have noted between, say, 8th Avenue, and then if you move just a little bit south, it jumps up to 32, goes like 16 to 32 feet, I believe. I can't remember the exact numbers. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit. And also just if you, one more related point, when I look at the line of the 1% flood risk, it is more likely to flood in that place of the 32-foot elevation. So it tells me the ways, the water really stacks up at that point. Meanwhile, there's a house just a little bit to the north in that 8th Avenue area that's probably a little bit lower, and it's only a 16-foot flood area, but it's not in the 1%. So there's, it's just an interesting dynamic there. And I just wonder if you could add any color as to what, I'm guessing it's the contour of the beach, but why does the water stack up so much? And is, and anything else you can kind of add, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, and apologies for any background noise. So it's a couple of things here. So one thing I should mention here is that FEMA doesn't cast a whole lot of transects when they're determining these 1% flood elevations. So across this entire beach stretch, you know, you're only talking about four, five transects, right? So that's why it's jumping around so much. It's not based on a high, high-resolution set of transects. It's related to a couple of things, as you mentioned. It is having to do with a little bit of that beach slope, but also it's the wave environment that you're seeing here. And really, if you go back to that sort of first slide, that winter versus spring waves that Ashley is mentioning, where it kind of shows a little bit of the zoomed-out, the sort of pocket beach area. And Ashley can kind of speak to this as well in terms of the wave environment, and why that particular area of the beach really just gets hit harder by larger waves than other parts. And it's kind of what Moses was just speaking about in terms of some of the shadowing that occurred.
Right. And I mean, and that's kind of it, where if you're getting waves coming more from the north, northwest, then the northern end of the beach will be more shadowed from that, from those waves. And that could be what we're seeing in that FEMA, FEMA too, that they're basically picking up on the idea that the breaking wave height at that location where the elevation is higher, the breaking wave height and the wave, I want to say focusing, but the wave height is higher at that location, probably because of shadowing.
Right. Yeah, as waves are kind of coming around Pescata Point, they're tending to be directed, and there's just going to be more wave energy in that sort of more central part of the beach. And as a result, it's going to be higher. Yeah.
Yeah, that certainly, from witnessing it this year, that seemed to be the case down there during the event. It was, the water was really stacking up there. Okay, thank you.
Michael?
No.
I have a question on the last slide, two questions on the last slide, which are, keep going, keep going, keep going. Vulnerability assessment, maybe the previous slide.
Next.
So a couple of years ago, you know, the committee here did a vulnerability assessment. So I'm wondering, you know, one of the things that we didn't do was a vulnerability assessment with respect to the beach. But I'm looking at the list of things on the bottom, and some of those things on the bottom we've done. So, or, you know, we're actually on paper in the city's small climate change, climate change documentation. So I'm wondering what the difference is, or what the overlap is, or how you're going to handle, you know, the things that this vulnerability assessment, which we're apparently maybe going to do again, is versus what we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, sure. So what this assessment here is doing is really building upon that previous assessment. And that last assessment was great. We've reviewed it. The work that we're doing right now is a more site-specific, so a modeling for the city of Carmel. The previous assessment relied on data that was modeled for the state at large, and it isn't really catered towards a more detailed site-specific level of analysis. So what we'll be doing is modeling a more site-specific level of erosion for the city, and then overlaying that erosion hazard area with the same type of data that was in that original assessment, but just now with a more refined hazard layer. So that's a more refined cliff erosion, dune erosion, and if there's been any potential overtopping that we see, sort of what extent of flooding would be over that.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I have a question for Bob. You know, when we, you know, there's been sort of an ongoing debate in the city about who's responsible for overseeing this vulnerability assessment. And, you know, the Climate Committee sort of put this together, and so for a long time, it's sort of been our, you know, this committee's bailiwick. And then it seems like, you know, with the first couple, with the first couple of, first couple of not phases, the first couple of tasks of this, it seems like it kind of shifted to the Forest and Beach Commission. So they got sort of the presentation, which is completely fine. So the Forest and Beach Commission got the first part of the presentation, the first go at the presentation and sort of overseeing the work that's been done. But when this shifts back to this vulnerability assessment, you know, I would really prefer, and I speak only for myself, I would really prefer that this, the oversight of this whole vulnerability assessment be handled by either this commission, if it's still in existence, or more likely the planning commission. Because the stuff on this, the stuff on this page is really related to, is really related to, and I've said this a number of times, the stuff on this page is really related to the city in general and the infrastructure of the city. You know, we're talking about parcels and structures and recreational space and stormwater and wastewater and water. And that seems to me more to be the bailiwick of the planning commission and not the Forest and Beach Commission. So we should have a conversation. So it's fine where we are right now, but when we get to doing this work, I would really, you know, my gut is to shift the responsibility back to the commission with the more broad oversight of the city and not just the beach and the parks.
And if I may piggyback off of that, yes, this has been discussed in the past. That was the intent. I believe where the Forest and Beach is concerned is the beach.
Right.
Items associated with the beach should and properly go to the Forest and Beach Commission, which it has. The climate change, the bigger picture of climate change citywide is this body, planning commission, depending on what the topic is. Yes. So that was kind of talked about when we talked about regenerating this committee and get this committee going into the future. So I agree with exactly what you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
I agree too.
So thank you so much.
So, question, is the plan to present this information to the council and the, and the public in a bigger forum? What's the plan? Because I, sorry, I haven't been keeping track lately.
No? Yes, when we're complete with Phase One, the attempt was to go to council with a summary, not, maybe it's not as much detail in each individual task, a summary of all of Task One, or I should say Phase One. And perhaps probably more than one presentation to council for Phase Two, because there's a larger component to that. Well, I think that, meaning that going back to Carrie's point and my earlier point, you know, we've always assumed that the vulnerability assessment was sort of incomplete because we hadn't done this work, right? So there's a big hole, you know, as you check down, as you check down, as you go down the list of all the vulnerabilities, there's a big hole for the, for the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, which says like sort of TBD, and it was always pending the work, it was always pending the work that's being done here. So I'd like to have a conversation, maybe we can do this offline. I'm not sure whether this is the right forum, about whether we're going to update, like, what's going to happen to the document that we produced in view of this document? Are we going to maintain two documents? Is that one going to be subsumed by this new document that, you know, is going to be produced in, you know, with this vulnerability assessment or what? Because I would like to make sure, you know, we produce this sort of 1.0 vulnerability assessment, and I would like to make sure that there is a 1.1 version that includes the shoreline. And if the 1.0 version, if that earlier version is going to remain in existence and not be overwritten by this one or made out of date by this one, then I would like to spend some effort and work, you know, some of these vulnerabilities back into that first document to make sure that that first document covers the ground that we've missed. Is that?
Yes, I agree. And I think when we get into the, when we're ready to go to the next topic, about all the projects associated with climate change, this is not, yes, there's, we need to update, we need to revise, present the council.
This is like a subset.
This is but one, this is the first big project. There's dozens of projects that we're going to briefly review in this next agenda item. So there's many, we're just getting started on this long-term program of implementing projects associated with those climate action and climate adaptation plans. So this type of issue will happen again and again and again.
Well, yeah, our vulnerability assessment from climate change is much bigger than just, so, than just the shoreline.
Right, but citywide.
Okay.
Anything else? Is that it? Thank you. Thank you, Integral and Haro Kasunich.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll go on to Item Two, review the list of adaptation strategies, and provide feedback for monitoring and implementation of the plans.
Can you turn the lights on, please? Because I can't read the small print. Oh, there we go.
Okay. So this item is to review the list of adaptation strategies for the climate action and adaptation plans. In September, the city began the process of developing the climate action and adaptation plans to establish a roadmap to reduce local GHG emissions and to adapt to climate change. In August, the city council adopted a resolution adopting the city's climate adaptation plan and action plan. The plans include numerous projects, initiatives, and programs that will be implemented over many years. Several projects have been completed, including recently we've purchased an electric sweeper that you might have been seeing throughout town. We have some electric vehicles that we've purchased and gotten grants for. We have some electric bicycles, both in planning and public works, that Public Works is coming.
And police.
And police, yes. And preparation of an energy efficiency study that was done by Will Dan. We've, I believe we put in four electric heaters in city facilities, and we're also coordinating with PG&E to develop electrical vehicle charging stations at city facilities and parking lots. And that's, that's not a comprehensive list, that's just a few items that we, you know, we brought up. So I wanted to just share this screen. So, so this is basically, if we want to go and just, you know, review what these are, you probably, as you were all working on developing these plans and came up with these strategies, so you're very familiar with this. And if you remember, this, this table was presented, I'm going to just shrink it down a little bit so the whole thing's shown. So, so this very first table has all of the adaptation strategies in the, the climate, is it the adaptation plan? And then as it's broken down into, I'm just going to flip through here, you can see we broke it down into near term and also midterm and long term. So on the tables where it's midterm, near term, and long term, we added a column to show status and also just notes of what we've been doing. And I just want to let you know that the status and the notes were one of my best guesses. And so if there's anything that anyone wanted to review and discuss, these, you know, it was kind of subjective, and they were things that, that we were pulling together for the staff report on, on what, what we've been doing. But it may not be comprehensive. And so if we, we want to discuss that, you know, we're open to that.
Yeah, I don't think that...
Oh, here it is, on the right.
Oh, it's just a...
Yeah, so just the ones that are near term, midterm, and long term have the status and the notes associated with it.
Yes, so my comment, my first comment would be, you know, as I sit here and look at all the near term things, you know, I see a lot of blank cells, 0% and 5%. And I think near term, we define near term by, as by 2024 is what it looks like. And it just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't really seem like there's a lot of progress by the city. So maybe that's my responsibility to sort of get, to get some of these things worked into staff's work plan. Right? So evacuation plan, you know, first, first update by 2023. So I guess, I guess Chip has five or six weeks to get that done, right?
Wow. And, and I, I have to admit, I did not coordinate the percentages with any of the other departments. So I didn't go to Police and Fire and ask them, because we didn't really have time, to really do a great assessment of that. So that's why in that column, there isn't a percentage there, because I really had no idea. And then a lot of them were a best guess.
Okay. Well, I think to me, comments from you guys?
So the, the status assessment, that's purely on you?
So let me, let me jump in in Mary's defense. So I asked, I asked, yeah, so I asked, yeah. Right. So I asked, and I asked three or four weeks ago when I was talking to Mary and Bob, I thought that it would be a good idea for us to be able to track this, these progress towards the goals that we had set. So I, you know, this conversation here, I'm hoping is as much a conversation about the format of this report and not necessarily what the numbers are, as I made my snarky comment about Chip having five weeks left. Not so much about what the numbers are or where Mary got the numbers. But how do we, how do we take this, how do we take the information that's presented, you know, by the sort of progress that the city's made and put it into a format that the average constituent of the city can read and say, oh, we've made a lot of progress in this area, or, oh, we haven't made very much progress in this area. Do you understand, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, we're attempting to create a format where we can determine our progress. And so you've established columns, and... And, I mean, you know, it, I guess my impression at this point is we're pretty early on in this project.
Yeah.
You know? And I think as we go along, we get more experience, we get more data. If we, if we find we need another column for some data, you know, we can always add that. And once we have enough data that it's worth adding. So, you know, that's, that's kind of, you know, my, my feeling. I mean, I, I think this is a good start, but it just seems like we're really in an early phase in this whole thing, which is understandable. You know, we, even though the climate committee has been in existence for a while.
We just finished.
It's, you know, in terms of, in terms of climate, it's a very short period of time. And I, and I wasn't trying to, I was just curious more about like what you said about how are these columns working, you know? Who's, who's providing data? Who puts it in? It's like you've been asking, you know, trying to determine responsibilities so you can delegate things, you know? And then you could proceed, you know, and start to get, you know, define goals, assign those goals, collect data and then try to record it so we can get a handle on where we are, you know, in the process and where we, you know, where we need to be, where we need to go, things like that.
I mean, just having the coastal assessment we just learned about, it was huge. It took us.
That was huge.
Took us years to get it funded, right? Jeff? So, and they're producing some very interesting data that kind of surprised me. So in that respect, I think we're making progress. And I like the format. It's just a matter of how to get this format so it becomes top of mind. I think that's, that's the tough part and that's what you're, you're saying.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping to sort of make a little bit of progress on. Because I don't think that Nancy Toomey's on the call, so I, I think she is, so I'll use her as an example. I don't think that Nancy Toomey can read this.
No.
And so I would like to produce a report, you know, I would like staff to produce a report that can be read by someone in, you know, someone in the, someone in constituent can go and say, how's the city doing on the update emergency preparedness item? And they can go to a page in some report somewhere and see sort of what we said was the, you know, the goal or the asset or the metric or whatever. And then they can see how much progress we've made. Like go to a page in a report, you know, and, and I'm not, and I, I'm, so like they can look at it online, like on their phone or on their iPad or whatever the medium is. And it's easy for them to find and easier for them. So it's, so it's transparent. And we don't have people, we don't have people come and say, well, I couldn't read this, I couldn't read this. I mean, you can't read this on the computer screen. It's very difficult. You know, it's, it's pretty difficult to read on a piece of paper, too.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Yeah, so on the, the format to this discussion, I'll chime in with thoughts. That I know percent complete is, is a commonly used indicator, but I would vote for, you know, red, yellow, green, you know, is, is the item being worked on? You know, meaning green, you know, yellow, that we're getting way behind, et cetera. So I, I like that as an indicator. And again, it's a easier, quick glance type thing. The other would be what department is responsible, is mostly on point for taking action? So that as this document lives behind closed doors in a dynamic form, you know, however you guys store this stuff online, that it could be filtered for the department so that they, in their regular status and, and updates can say, okay, I want to see just the things that are, the forestry department, I'm making it up. So could it be filtered for just the forestry department? Then they can go in and, and provide status or however. So it's just a logistics thing. So I think department and red, yellow, green indicators might be a, a good thing as helpful. I mean, I liked the, you know, I did read through all of this stuff when, when the team was meeting regularly and, and absorbed it and stuff, but I was committed and not everybody is. So couple of two cents, lots for your consideration.
Yeah, I think to Nancy's point, you know, there's some, there are some lessons already that have already been learned by, by Chip, who's been putting together sort of the strategic, you know, the strategic documentation for the, for the city council. And we've spent sort of years peering, you know, peering over that and trying to get that into a readable form that the five of us can understand and sort of get through. And maybe there's something there, maybe there's something in there, either working with Nova, who, either Nova or Emily, who, whoever it is that owns that document. And sort of learning, you know, because they've, they've put some effort into trying to make readable documents for us. And then Brandon's going to have this, this same issue when he gets to documenting all the housing stuff. The same thing's going to happen. So, you know, having a, having a store of information like this spreadsheet is good, but having a more readable report, I think, would be better.
Yeah, I think what we need is a synthesis report. I mean, that's what the, you know, I did, when I was doing my research on sea level rise, I read the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change reports. And they always produce a synthesis report for policymakers, which basically is pretty much, it's a summary, it's written and it has, it's, it has a few graphs just to support their summaries. But, you know, it, it really is focused on, you know, a verbal summary. And they have a format which could, can be used as a model and it's, it's pretty good.
Okay, I think there's something there, too.
You might take a look at it, it's rarely available.
Okay, great.
Sure.
Sure. Fantastic. Yeah, I have several comments to make based on your discussion. Just come back in time a little bit. In August of 2022, when council adopted the, the two plans, then council member Tice said, quote, "Do not put this on the shelf and let it collect dust. Implement the projects." And we took it to heart. Since that time, we did have a, several meetings, this is before Mary Stein. We did have several meetings with the department directors and the former environmental programs manager. We went through a lot of these. We, there's another version of this, that's all color coded. Purple is police, green is forest, whatever. It's all color coded. We talked about how to implement that. Unfortunately, we had a lot of staffing changes, police and public works and so on and so forth. That set us back a little bit. And the strategic priorities that committee member, committee chair, Barron mentioned, there was really, there's two things on the council strategic priorities pertaining to this. Do the coastal engineering study, and I think we've made great efforts to get it this far. We're finishing up phase one, we just got funding for phase two. And I believe more recently, we added to put the climate committee back together. Here we are. So I think those strategic priorities are happening. Then we get into the, all the other tasks, which was many. Some of these capital projects that have some funding, but most of them are not. So we're kind of resource constrained on staffing and funding. That said, when we were putting the percentage together, we had the question, EV charging stations. Think we had five percent. When do we get to 100%? When every parking space has an EV charging station? We have two projects right now, we're going to be putting 12 to 15 charging stations in. Sunset Center parking lot, probably. We have three new double chargers in Visalobos. Visalobos plans are almost done. Is it 5% of the long term? Is it 5%, we're a lot more than 5% of these two projects? So we're not really quite sure. And, and this is kind of like the discussion we wanted to have engaged with the committee, is how, how, we're asking, we're seeking for feedback. Holding that thought for a second, we thought that, and I think collectively, we thought that you're familiar with this list, because you guys cover this list.
The way it looks.
So we thought it was a good transition. Hey, welcome back, fresh your memory. Here's the list, here's where we left off. We all, only changed, I think, was the percentage and a couple of miscellaneous projects were noted. I love the idea of putting a, more streamlined list like we do for the council strategic priorities, put it on the website under environmental programs, where all the other documents are in this. So it's more user friendly to everybody, the committee, staff, the public. So I think that's, that's the kind of feedback we were seeking guidance from this committee. How do you want us to do this? Because this is a pretty onerous thing. But then going back to, okay, how, how should we be gauging these?
The progress.
Projects and quite frankly, the finance or, I'm going to spend some money. Some of these projects cost money. Most of these projects are not yet funded. We're not, this is not the council budget session. But similar to Forest and Beach Commission, when we get to the CIP, I asked the Forest and Beach Commission, hey, if you have projects, now's the time to identify them. Let me know and I'll, I'll do my best to try to get them sold to the city council. And I think this is the same appropriate thing, in my opinion, anyway. Climate committee, if you have some, you know, hey, let's focus on X, Y, Z. By all means, I can try to get into CIP or talk to the finance department or Chip or whatever, try to get those particular projects funded. But I, I don't know, I've been doing this for a long time. Like having 25 different projects all at the same time with the expectation of getting them all done in 2024 is a bit much.
Well, I think it's up to you to determine what, what the, no, what the, how you judge whether a project is 0% or 50% or 100% done. Like I don't, I don't think I particularly care. Like what, you know, I know when we sit on the council, I mean, what we care about is that the number goes up and up and up. And if it's 100% and then it comes off the list. And if you sit here, like if you, you know, if, if staff, I don't, and I don't mean to say you. I mean, if staff, you know, looks at establishment resilience hub, I mean, that looks like a long one. And you put, you know, six goals in there and you say, when we get to this goal, it's 10% and we get to this goal, it's 25% and so on. Like no one's going to argue. Like I don't think we, I don't think we particularly care. But I think the methodology is to just, you know, establish, you know, clear goals. And when I, as I sit here and I look down this list, some of the goals are listed in the list. Like some of them are self-evident, maintain and update an evacuation plan every eight years.
Right.
So, you know, at 2023, like you're 0% done. And when you get the evacuation plan done, you'll be 100% done. And then seven years from now, it'll go back to 0% and you'll have a year to get it done again. I mean, that, that seems easy and, and so there's an easy one and there's a more difficult one. So I, I would expect that with each of these actions, you know, you would just have a way of, you know, a sort of objective way, we love objective, objective things, right, Michael? We would, we would have an objective way to evaluate, you know, how close you are to, you know, does this, you know, and you just check off the box. Like, so all the work is done upfront when you set up the numbers. And then as you go, as we go on through the next five years, you just say, okay, well, we're here. And that avoids the, the problem of fudging the numbers.
This could be a good staff exercise, staff homework between now and the next committee meeting, on a better way to identify how to assess these percentages.
I think you're also asking us to prioritize things so that you can bring that to the council to get the funding. Because a lot of the stuff, most of this stuff seems to me costs money.
Many, yes.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it.
Or, or, and some, quite a few of these are not hardly any money, but time intensive. A lot of labor hours to.
But there's some things on here.
And some are easy.
There's some things on here that we have, like, you know, as I look at some of these things, like emergency preparedness, like we have a search team. Like, and there are other people in the community that can do some of these things. And I know, you know, you know, we have Carmel Care, so I know that that's a big effort to manage. But maybe there are other, other organizations in the community, other volunteers in the community, the stuff that really doesn't take money or project management, money or budgeting or all that stuff. You know, some of this stuff can be done by other community members. And, and it's really just a question of having the community volunteer and public works, whoever that is, the overseer, sort of manages people. And that becomes a project management question, not a, not a, not really a budget question.
Okay. Well, well, in that case, then we need, we need to figure out which are those.
Yeah.
You know, and then kind of, you know, separate this stuff into different, you know, piles of activities to get the results that we want, you know? I'm a little bit focused on the money right now because that old beach report looked to me like it's going to cost a lot of money. So that was kind of, it's kind of up front in my mind. But, but I understand exactly what you're saying. It's delegating off to groups of people that have the ability and the desire to do some of these things.
Yeah, and if it's the planning commission, I mean, sometimes they can just talk about it like three times a year and after a couple of years, maybe they'll get that.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
We just have to, like, you just have to have the first meeting to get.
Get it on the agenda.
To get it on the agenda.
Right. And I, I do recall, going back to when the plans were being adopted, this is not just a public works plan. This is citywide, all departments and community volunteers and other agencies. We need, we need to work together. Climate change is not just affecting one department or others.
Yeah, it's a citywide.
All of us, all of us.
It's a citywide effort.
So perhaps we need to do more homework for the next meeting and come up with a better game plan on how to present the information, track the percentages, make recommendations for priorities and also take your guidance for priorities.
At the outcome of this meeting, we could have some specific activities that we do between now and then, which we could delegate off to members of the committee with this, you know, with specific, specific focus based upon the goals that we're talking about in this meeting.
Right. I don't know exactly what that means.
Well, it means that, you know, it's just, it's just trying to identify specifically, you know, where we can, as you said, delegate some of this off to some groups, identify those groups, you know, to go through here. You know, I mean, you know, when I saw this on the agenda, it just seemed to me like a really big, big thing. You know, we're going to go through the whole thing again? What?
So why don't we do that for the next meeting?
Sure.
Why don't we go through, why don't we go, we can each go through this list and think about who should be doing this stuff? You can work on organizing the report and.
Okay. And if you want, wish to give comments in the meantime to, or thoughts, comments to Mary in the meantime, by all means, do so, please.
Yeah, I mean, on this list, sorry, on this list, you know, we, you have assigned, you know, who, who's supposed to, department that's supposed to implement it or be the implementation lead. So the departments there, it's just, you know, jazzing it up a bit with some colors of red and green. That always helps. But trying to, you know, some of this, the Carmel Foundation could do when we're talking about the elderly population, you know? So engaging them in, in some of that. So it, it takes an effort to get everybody kind of moving forward. I think that's where we're kind of, we have to get our heads around that.
I have a comment on the, the chargers. I know how you do that.
The EV chargers?
Yeah.
Oh.
You measure the utilization.
Not the football team.
You measure the utilization, no. You measure the utilization of the chargers. That's how you decide whether you have enough. And you're at zero, you're at 100% when the utilization of the chargers gets up to whatever the industry measure is. So if you have a charger and it's used, if the industry measures like four hours a day, then when you get up to four hours a day, you're done. But when you get up, when your chargers are used six or eight hours a day, then you're not done. And you need to install, you need to install more chargers. So that's how you measure how many chargers you need. And that's how you, that's specifically how you should evaluate.
Oh, I see, okay.
How much, where you are on the scale of 0 to 100%.
We do know we clearly need more than we have today because they're being used very.
All the time.
All the time.
So that's clearly not.
Request for, when's the next batch coming in? So we're getting there. But, yeah, to what point?
But that's how you.
Do we need 100 more? I don't know, probably not. What, what do we?
You just, you, you need, you have to be sort of agnostic about it. You need however many you need.
You just keep adding them until.
Until, until the utilization is whatever your target utilization is. That's, I'm sure that's what they do over at the Tesla thing in Monterey, the number keeps going up and up. Okay. So should we plan on meeting again, you know, like in January? Does that have time for everybody?
Yeah, we can, we can plan a January meeting. It's, I think we're saying it's the third Thursday at 3:30, if that works for everybody.
Does that work with everybody here? Do you want to meet in January? In December?
I think December's a little tough with all the.
Yeah, December is with the holiday. I, I mean, my schedule's pretty well loaded.
So January 18th would be.
My wife, Dick, just redid my calendar, I was like, oh, God.